All right, I think we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the candidates forum for the three positions of council members of Colonial Beach. We had another forum yesterday for mayor. These forums are planned and presented by the Colonial Beach Chamber of Commerce and the Colonial Beach Community Foundation. I'm Eric Nelson, I'm the president of the Colonial Beach Community Foundation, and I have with me, who's going to be moderator this evening, Carrie Geddes, the president of the Colonial Beach Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to thank the school for letting us use this facility, and I'd like to thank the Hard to Tell Band and Marty for providing this sound equipment for us, and town staff for doing the Facebook Live, thank you Maggie. And I got a lot of comments today about the fact that the radio was, the radio station wasn't broadcasting last night, and I understand they had technical difficulties with the Wi-Fi. So, they're not going to be broadcasting live, but I learned just a few moments ago that this is going to be recorded and will be posted on the radio station's site at some point, and you'll hear more about that later. Before we begin, I want to comment about something that happened last night that you may have seen on social media. I had words with Mr. Fitzpatrick last night, and what I said was completely out of character and completely uncalled for, and I immediately regretted it. I did apologize to him, and he accepted my apology, and after that, we had a pretty cordial conversation. So, I just wanted to acknowledge what happened last night, you may have seen on social media. All right, let's begin. There are a few guidelines that will be observed during the forum. The candidates forum is not an audience participation event. All questions for individual or all candidates have been received by this time. There will be no questions recognized from the seated audience. As a side, we receive more than 200 questions between the two forums, and I want to thank all of the residents for all the questions that they provided. They were all very interesting. We couldn't use all of them, of course, so we consolidated them, and I think we had a good number of questions to ask. The questions will be asked at the discretion of moderators. The questions, as I said, the questions of some of the same category were combined. Questions will be alternated between the candidates. Candidates may be directed to, oh, sorry, questions may be directed to a candidate specifically or all in general. The candidate receiving a question will be given two minutes to answer the question. The other candidates will have two minutes for amplification or follow-up. For questions directed towards a specific candidate, there will be no rebuttal or comment by other candidates. A candidate may receive a follow-up question at the discretion, oh, I'm sorry, did I say two, one minute rebuttal? Two minutes to answer the question, one minute rebuttal. Thank you Carrie. A candidate may receive a follow-up question at the discretion of the moderators. There's no rebuttal from other candidates to follow-up questions. Candidates will begin with an opening statement of three minutes and finish the evening with a closing statement of three minutes. Approximately 90 minutes will be devoted to questions and answers. I ask that you respect others in the room and to prevent the spread of COVID-19 virus by wearing a properly treated face mask and maintaining at least a six-foot personal separation. And just to go back to the thing I was talking about a moment ago, I wanted to also say that none of my views that I expressed last night to Mr. Fitzpatrick would use as a foundation of my own personal views. I meant to mention that a moment ago. All right, enough of that. Let me introduce the candidates. We have six of them, as I mentioned. We have Mike Avery, we have Alan Darlington, Wayne DeRozario, Dallas Lehman, Thomas Moncur, and Karen Self-Sullivan. So, welcome all of you, and we look forward to a likely exchange of ideas from you. So, thank you. Okay, Mr. Carey, you have three minutes, I'll give you.
All right, thank you. So first.
Marty, there we go. All right, first, I want to thank the organizers here then, the foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, and all of you for showing up tonight and those who have been listening on the Facebook Live, it's great to see participation in town governance. I want to acknowledge that I've been in Colonial Beach for a short time. Four years ago, we bought a home here, a little over a year ago, I lived here full-time, and my wife and I found it very easy to get recruited into the many volunteer opportunities in this town, and we enjoyed it. And after volunteering at multiple events, I realized I should be actively looking to serve this community instead of pass up and waiting to be asked. That drove me to join the planning commission, which I joined last year, and then I signed up for it and got accepted to be a substitute for the high school, so I started doing that last year as well, and enjoyed it thoroughly, so much so that I volunteered to deliver school lunches this summer to the families and the students when school shut down. I do believe I'm qualified to serve our town council. I had 30 years in the Army before I retired in 2016. In those 30 years, a couple of years, a couple of times, I was afforded the opportunity to attend specialized high school operations, strategic planning, I've been involved with development of strategic plans, been involved with leading soldiers, sons and daughters of America, and responsible for the health and welfare of their families in that role. I know what it takes to help a community grow, help a community get better. I provide a form on the brochure that I set at the table for those who are listening in. The brochure was released online on Facebook, on my favorite Colonial Beach Facebook page. I appreciate the opportunity to join this conversation tonight, and I'll leave a word to the questions. Thank you.
Marty, Mr. Avery, Mrs. Darlington, three minutes.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Alan Darlington. I like to start by saying that my wife and I were a weekend home here in '07, and would come down from Fairfax every other weekend when I had time, when I had time off from We could not get out of northern Virginia fast enough. Our blood pressure would drop significantly, heavy to CT on your beach, even though we were on 95. On our, on our weekend, we met and made friends with a number of people, and they impressed us as good people. They had not disappointed us. We traveled here from '07 until 2015, when I retired from my medical field as a registered nurse, a career of 50, a career of 51 years across two hospitals. During my career, I worked with many professional supervisors, a number of staff as a team leader, worked as part of a team to coordinate, plan patient care, and set goals for patient outcome, goal outcome. I learned that being part of a team, how to listen, evaluate, and negotiate with others to achieve a successful outcome. Shortly before my retirement in 2015, I started looking, I started looking for a place to build my retirement home. While doing my research, or my real estate research, my focus kept coming back to Colonial Beach. My wife and I are good here, and liked, and we like most of the people. The feeling we had for Colonial Beach is strong, and we decided to build our retirement home here. My wife and, my wife and I, my wife and I have two homes here. We pay sufficient amount of taxes to support the town. We are invested. With that being said, I tell, I, with that being said, I think I can be beneficial on the council, and to that end, beneficial for the people of Colonial Beach.
Thank you, Dr. Darlington, time's up. Mr. Davis.
Dustin. Hello?
Dustin, one, two. Okay, thank you. I want to thank the chamber, the foundation, and all the citizens who came out here this evening. Good evening. I'm Wayne DeRozario, a lifelong resident of Colonial Beach and part of a family of six generations living within the town of Colonial Beach. To invest my knowledge, I'm the only candidate who went to Colonial Beach High School. I hold degrees in both political science, police science, police safety, and certified forensic science. During my 67 years here, I have served as mayor, town council member, acting chief police, acting town manager, and I've served three terms as district representative and the Westmore County Board Supervisors. I retired from law enforcement as a police sergeant and spent many years as a warden as Colonial Beach's original industry. I, like you, I live on social security. Certainly, county and county has always been my greatest passion. I truly agree that I understand our citizens and how frustrated they must feel with some of the recent and past decisions that have been made by our town council acting on behalf of all of us. With the bestest interest in this town and its people, I have always tried to be a voice of reason and progress, building and maintaining bridges within our town government with an open-door policy. History reflects that my agenda has always listed to work with the betterment of the lives of all of our citizens. Some of my previous memberships in the area include president of the Colonial Beach Taxpayers Association, member and director of Bay Agency, Northern Neck Disability Board, member of the Colonial Beach Chamber of Commerce, board of directors for Friends of the Tonnee Organization, and appointed to the Lower Patonnee River Basin Committee, member of the Colonial Beach Rescue Squad Power Department, member of the Colonial Beach Planning Commission, and Wheels on Wheels. While representing Colonial Beach, I was strongly supported and was successfully advising the school funding formula to ensure that Colonial Beach got their fair share of the funding available. During the same time, I supported and was successfully persuaded the board to do the same in the town's boundary adjustment, which brought back substantial revenues to the town. I was instrumental in the beach fund restoration project and in paying the grant for the labyrinth which we all treasure. We have many difficult issues requiring intelligent and honest dedication to task. Among those are finding innovative ways to increase our growth, attract appropriate businesses, and provide.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, time's up. Mr. Lehman.
First off, I'd just like to say that I didn't know I was going to have three minutes, so my comments were probably short. The email that I got said I was only getting two, so. Good evening. I'm councilmember Dallas Lehman. I'm running for reelection to Colonial Beach Town Council. I was elected to town council four years ago. Two or three years I served as the vice mayor of the town. I've enjoyed my time working for the town and its residents that I truly love. When I ran for election four years ago, I was a police supervisor for the Colonial Beach Police Department. Just prior to the election, I accepted a position with Arlington County Government as their crisis intervention team coordinator. I was excited after winning the city council with that election because that meant that I could continue to serve this community where I live in some capacity. That being said, it has, times have been difficult to attend all town council meetings because my career has to come first. I've been working from here since March and will continue to do so, occasionally having to make a day trip to Arlington, which will not be on council meeting days if at all possible. If I'm re-elected at town council, I will continue to strive for town management and our council to be as transparent as possible. I will continue to be supportive of all town staff and thank the job that they do for us every day, especially the police department and public works who have helped us, the whole town, through this pandemic thus far. I will also continue to support Colonial Beach Public Schools because we have an obligation to provide proper education for our youth. I will continue to support the Colonial Beach Fire Department and the Colonial Beach Rescue Squad as they continue to provide vital services to our town and its residents. I will continue to support our NGOs who provide so much to our town free of charge, and I will also continue volunteering with many of them. Colonial Beach is on the cusp of some really exciting growth and development, and if I'm re-elected, I will continue to work hard to see this growth and development done correctly and ensure that our town is protected and reaps all the benefits. These are exciting times for our town, and I look forward to being a part of it. In closing, thank you for being here for this forum and your interest in our town's lucky council. On November 3rd, please vote, and vote for me, Dallas Lehman, as one of your council members for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Dr. Darlington, two minutes.
While a recent full-time resident, I am not new to Colonial Beach. My father's people have been on the North of that since the middle of the 17th century. I was born in Fredericksburg, raised in Stafford, and on my youthful exposures regularly ran the length and breadth of the neck, and yes, I do remember the rhythm. I retired and served in the Army Reserves as a career military police officer. I retired from service for the Commonwealth as senior assistant attorney general and university counsel for George Mason University. I have been involved in state and local government, either on a full or part-time basis, most of my adult life. I have the time to devote to council business and, with your vote, the experience to hopefully lay the groundwork. We want Colonial Beach to be a pleasant place to live, work, and distance. We want to maintain the best of a small-town atmosphere while seeking thoughtful, deliberate, and balanced improvement. In order to do this, we need to encourage appropriate commercial growth, building on the businesses, restaurants, and amenities we already possess. I am also, quite unapologetically, a fiscal conservative. Simply put, most of us have limited incomes, we spend power workings, and adhere to budgets so as to live within our needs. There is no reason why town government should be any different. And we can't take questions from the audience, but to answering questions, sweetly put, the manicures around Happy Clam are family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Dr. Self-Sullivan, three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, town staff. Thank you, Marty. Thank you to the school system, the foundation, the chamber, for making this possible. I grew up in Cary Farms in South Stafford, with his cousins that ran the Happy Clam. I've been in Colonial Beach for as long as I can remember. I've been eating crabs at Harpers and playing on the pier while my mom and dad drank beer after we finished our class. I can pull in the handle on a slot machine when I was five, six years old, which couldn't put the lid in, but she just pulled the handle. And my family connection goes back a lot further, all the way to Gary Sullivan, who was my seventh-grade grandfather. He landed in Monroeia in 1660. The story goes, he was a stowaway. He was a very young man, he landed, and he died here in 1699. Also, the Oklahoma, Oklahoma and Kefoom, who were my 10th-grade grandfathers. So, I, I live and breathe the Northern Neck, that's who I am. I have three children and six grandchildren. Before going to college, I was a little state salesperson in Brooklyn for 15 years in Fredericksburg. I helped my parents buy and sell seven properties in Colonial Beach. I have degrees in marine science and wildlife and fishing sciences. My education and experience has played 25 years in business, and in over 30 years, was a teacher and research scientist, which took me around the world. I've lived in, I've lived in most of the states on the East Coast, Rhode Island, Georgia, Florida, I've lived in Texas, I've worked, lived and worked in Belize, Ghana, Australia, and the Caribbean. I made Colonial Beach my forever home in 2013. I'm running because I believe we can continue to grow and develop our community in a sustainable way. With three members leaving council, I felt like it was my time to step up and take on the challenges serving. I know Colonial Beach well. The cottage has been my second home for 35 years, and I've lived here full-time for eight years. I've attended council meetings on a regular basis since 2013, and I've served on the board or volunteered with over a dozen local nonprofit organizations. I love this town and cannot imagine living anywhere else. I've lived here long enough, and I've been involved long enough to understand our history, our strengths and our challenges, and how far we've come. I'm in a position to provide continuity and institutional knowledge as we work towards our future. The current council has built momentum, and I know we are on the cusp of something extraordinary. If it left here, I would bring my experience, expertise, passion, and love to Colonial Beach to that task. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Self-Sullivan. The first question will be from Mr. Davis. You'll have two minutes, Mr. Davis. Would you be supportive of having an open town hall meeting periodically to communicate with the citizens and hear what they have to say?
I would absolutely be supportive of that. My experience in the Army in any kind of position was if you had to have open communication with those around you. There has to be context given to decisions made. Some decisions may not be taken well, but if you can provide the context of why that decision was made, if you can give the citizens of the town a sense of the direction, the vision that the council has, the leadership has, that you are on track with the complacency plan, then I think that it would be much smoother. The communication has to flow, not just the information going out, but you have to know what you're receiving and listening as well, though.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Johnson, you have one minute, your vote.
Yes, I would be open for, for citizens to be, to be present, to be, for the council. I'm sitting here this evening as, as a candidate, but before this evening, I'm one of the citizens sitting in the audience, so I certainly would like to continue that, to have citizen participation.
Thank you, Mr. Darlington. Mr. DeRozario, one minute.
I would do what I did when I was on board, superstars, and when I was first elected to council in 1980, is to have meet a council member once every quarterly and then write a quarterly report where you can meet the constituents, listen to their problems, and then to act, and then implement them toward the council. That way, you can have a good dialogue with the citizens of Colonial Beach and go back and forth and have a better government. That's transparency, and that's what I call my move toward government, with communicating with the citizens and the taxpayers and the voters of Colonial Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mrs. Lehman, one minute.
I don't want to repeat a lot of what the other candidates have said, but it's the community that puts us on the council. They're the ones who elect us, and I would have no issue meeting with any of our community members. I have community members reach out to me constantly with concerns, with questions, et cetera, and I try to address those to the best of my ability. One thing I would say that I will not do is subject myself to social media, and I don't respond to those, those types of requests. But my email is posted on the town website, my phone number's posted on the town website, and if there's an issue that I'm involved in that you have a question about, I welcome any of you to give me a call or drop me an email, and you will get a response.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Dr. Moncur, one minute.
If the rest are being doubly redundant, all of my campaign literature has an email from her on it. Always glad to hear from everybody in town.
Thank you, Dr. Moncur. Dr. Self-Sullivan, one minute.
So, I heard the question is that an open town hall meeting is on a regular basis?
Understood. Would you be supportive of having an open town hall meeting periodically to communicate with the citizens and hear what they have to say?
Absolutely. Of course, our meetings are open and our citizens are welcome to attend anytime, but they're limited as to how much time they receive at the end of the work session or at the end of the, of the regular meeting. But yes, to have a town hall meeting where citizens can say anything would be great. And in that vein, I have already started and plan to continue open office hours on a weekly basis where I'm available to meet with citizens and just drop in and talk to me about issues.
Thank you, Dr. Self-Sullivan. Next question is from Vicky, Mr. Darlington, two minutes. Do you see a solution to the problem of access to basic medical services in town?
A problem? Can you say it again for me?
Certainly. Do you see a solution to the problem of access to basic medical services in town?
A problem? I, I, I think that the town needs to focus or have a consensus for a medical officer to want to be stationed here, to want to work out of Colonial Beach, make it beneficial for that medical person.
Thank you, Mr. Darlington. Mr. DeRozario, one minute, same question.
In the past, hello? Give me, give me time for this. Hello? 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 It's my turn, Dr. Darlington.
We'll start it right now.
Thank you, thank you. In the past, we've had doctors here, we've had eye doctors, and we've had dentists here, and they've left. That was back in the six, seventies with the dentists. The eye doctor left, I think, back in the nineties or whatnot. I was one of the first ones, the white runners, to get the medical center over in the old, new shopping center. What I see as the problem is, is that we need more influx of people coming into Colonial Beach, and when you do, you'll get more medical services coming into the town. Why we get people or doctors into the new shopping center, they're, they serve a short period of time and they leave, whether it's a lease problem or whatever the issue is, but the influx of people to come into the town of Colonial Beach will end up getting more medical assistance coming into town. We do have a, we're, we're in a medical shortage area under medical services in town of Colonial Beach, and more people come in real soon or later get that.
Thank you, Mr. Vicky. Mr. Lehman, same question, one minute.
I, I, there's definitely a, a problem that we need, we need more medical services here. When I was elected to council, Mr. Leeny, he was on the council when I was elected, actually elected to move with his wife back to Fredericksburg where they could get better medical services. And that's definitely a problem, especially when our community, when our community is mixed with retirement age folks, you know, elderly folks, as well as young people who are moving to our town. I don't know what the answer is, other than I think we probably need an influx in population to put a bigger demand on the, you know, having a medical, a medical facility here that is, that is full-time and taking patients. I do know that they're putting one in King George, so obviously there's more demand there, and I think that will help some until we get people here.
Mr. Moncur, same question, one minute.
We have a doctor in town, but dentists and eye doctors are getting closer in King George. At some point, hopefully, we'll have populations to support those services here.
Thank you, Mr. Moncur. Same question, one minute, Dr. Self-Sullivan.
Thank you. The solution lies in increasing our, our population so that we have enough business to support the different medical professions, but another solution is to partner with hospitals, particularly teaching hospitals, and possibly provide an opportunity for residents and to serve you as part of their internship or their residency.
Thank you, Dr. Self-Sullivan. Mr. Davis, same question, one minute.
So, the risk of being repetitive?
Well, the risk of being repetitive, absolutely mean a larger population withdrawing additional medical providers. But I think there's another step we can take too, which is promoting a healthy lifestyle in Colonial Beach, the development of places for run, walk, bike. Those types of things will put us in a healthier position overall until we get that needed medical support that's been discussed earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next question is from Vicky, Mr. DeRozario, two minutes. Next question will be for you, Mr. DeRosa, two minutes. Do you think the school system should be consolidated with the county?
That is a question that has been raised since the sixties, when I attended here. And I served on the board of supervisors. That is a question between the two school boards to get together and make that decision. It makes no difference whether the town council or the board of supervisors, what they think. It's a matter between the two school boards, Westmoreland County Board's School Board and the Town of Columbia Beach School Board. Columbia Beach has great pride and drip of pride, and I was mayor back in 1984 when the vast majority of the citizens built this new school system over here on a non-binding pledge system, which has never been emulated in the United States to this day. So I think the citizens of Columbia Beach love this school, and I don't think the school's going anywhere anytime soon.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. Mr. Lemon, one minute.
There we go, Martin. No, I do not think the school system should merge with Westmoreland County. In the four years that I've been on the town council, me and both of the councils that I've worked for, as well as Mayor Blount have worked, and our town manager has worked very closely with our school board, our school superintendents. I think COVID-19 is a prime example of why we need to keep our school system the way it is and it being intact here. Because Columbia Beach schools are leading the way in doing online learning, and we have localities around us that are much larger with much larger budgets who have had to follow suit with Columbia Beach. I may never have a child in either one of these schools, and if I don't, that's okay. But I'm going to pay for a school wherever I live. And, you know, that's one thing unique about this community, and I said it in my opening statements. We are, as adults, we must provide adequate education for our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Mr. Montier, one minute.
Consolidation, no. And for a particular reason, there was been discussion at times of Columbia Beach going to city status. The big hurdle in doing that is having a school system. We need to retain that school system, and when we hit the population level, we need to look at city status to avoid double decays.
Thank you, Mr. Montier. Dr. Sullivan, one minute.
No, I would not support consolidation. I've watched the local school system, our independent school system rise in rankings over the eight years that I've been here. They rose about forty points a couple of years ago. They've now been accredited, and the county schools have not done that. If we consolidated, we would lose our economy and are looking to make the decisions that are best for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Mr. David, one minute.
As a substitute teacher, I had the opportunity to review some of the SLL as a standard of learning score for our students. And like Dr. Sullivan, it's obvious that our students are performing at a level that has been exceeding some of us around the school. At this time, I would not support consolidation. I would be interested in finding out if there was a particular problem that it's supposed to solve, and I don't like to solve problems that aren't there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. David. Mr. Donaldson, one minute.
From what I'm hearing, I'm not quite up on the, I think, the school system, but from what I'm hearing from the members here, it sounds like we have the best system we have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Next question, Mr. Lemon. You'll have two minutes to answer this. As a council member, how important would you consider the recommendations of a planning commission?
My last candidacy, I ran on backing the planning commission. As a town employee and prior to me being elected to council, especially when I was a town employee, the planning commission, who are a group of volunteers mandated by the state to do the work that they do. They volunteer to do training, they volunteer countless hours to do what's right for the town and make recommendations to the town council. While I was a employee of the town and under a previous town manager, things were often overlooked that the planning commission worked tirelessly on by our town manager then, as well as some of our members of council. And I think that the planning commission is mandated. These folks volunteer for us, they do a lot of work for us so that we don't have to do it at a council level, and we should respect their recommendations and respect the plan that they put before us.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. One minute, Dr. Montier.
Decisions of the planning commission should be given briefly and serious consideration, but the ultimate decision always lies at some council.
Thank you, Dr. Montier. Dr. Sullivan, one minute.
Absolutely. We need to respect the direction that the planning commission is giving us. They have time to do the research that we as council dump. We're very often asked to make decisions on quick notice, and if we don't have the planning commission and the comprehensive plan to look back to to see whether or not that falls within what the planning commission has recommended, then we can't make those good decisions.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Mr. David, one minute.
As a current planning commission member, I assume it's very important with the council to take recommendations of the planning commission. I would like to echo the fact that it's a recommendation we make, and ultimately, the decision is with the town council, and hopefully, we've done our homework as planning commissions well enough to inform them for the right decision.
Thank you, Mr. David. Mr. Donaldson, one minute.
I concur with that, and I would say that it's very important. I think it's very important that we keep our ear to the planning commission and listen to what they offer and what they have to say, so as council members, we can make our decision.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. DeRosa, one minute.
I agree with two previous speakers. As a previous member of the planning commission from the town council, it's countless hours, that's why we appoint the commissions, to give us recommendations on the ten-year plan, on the comprehensive plan. So it's the council's responsibility, and they can change the plan at any time. It's a working paper. But these people put in countless hours making recommendations, and council usually goes by what their recommendations are. But again, as things, it's a fluid plan, and things change from town to town, but we usually go by what their recommendations are.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. Okay, next question will be for you, Mr. Montier, two minutes. What would be your plans for economic development in Columbia Beach?
We have two hours for that? I'm sorry, that's about as broad a question as you can possibly pose. We have, I would suggest, something of a plan in the business district revitalization plan as a predicate. Obviously, the problem that we have had over the years is how to kickstart a lot of these programs. We've had plans that have come before, and we have had major developments, major projects, that never came to fruition. I am exceedingly hopeful that the Dobson Group project gets off the ground. And I would suggest to you, that's exactly what we need to plant the seed to bring about the revitalization plans in our own books.
Thank you, Dr. Montier. Dr. Sullivan, one minute.
If we're serious about economic development, and I think we are, we need to have a staff position dedicated to that purpose. Our manager's done a great job with the budget, and he's improved a lot of our ability to look at things long-term. Our volunteers have done a great job with beautification and improving our facade. But we need a dedicated person for economic development. Whether we hire our own person or whether we buy into a regional economic development team, it's essential. I spoke this afternoon with Sandy Hoffman-Davis, who is on the economic development team for Hanger, which is a small town just outside of Myrtle Beach where I used to live. They're developing a strategic plan to ensure they can survive without the Myrtle Beach tourism in cases like COVID this summer. There's a lot of pre-work we have to do before we hire somebody else. And we need to have a consultant that will help us identify what we can offer businesses, what kind of businesses that we want, and how we staff those businesses. We need to know what our base is for employees within a fifteen to twenty-minute radius of Columbia Beach.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Mr. David, one minute.
In addition, it was been stated about the development, economic growth. I think it needs to be balanced with the development of residences that we can have, the folks that come here. The staffing of these businesses, hopefully, would be the business types that would employ the citizens of Columbia Beach primarily. I think the economic growth that has to be shown, it's got to, the Northern Net Council has shown it. It doesn't have to be large, teen retail box stores. It can be unique stores or small stores, but I would like to see it in terms of opportunities for employment of citizens of the town in that economic development.
Thank you, Mr. David. Mr. Donaldson, one minute.
I would be open to listen to the town manager and the planning commission committee and see what they are recommending, what they see as that would be good for economic development for the town. And we can discuss this as council members and try to figure out the things that would be beneficial for a business to come to this town and operate out of this town.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. DeRosa, one minute.
I agree with all the other speakers, except this is one of the recommendations that I recommended four years ago when I ran for mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeRosa. One minute.
Just to not repeat what everybody else has said, I do agree with Dr. Sullivan. We need a professional to come in here and lead us in that direction. I think we need more than just restaurants. We need some type of industry here that will sustain employment here. Where we would put that, I don't know, but I think we do need somebody that knows what the heck they're doing. And I'm a retired cop. I don't know what I'm doing when it comes to economic development. So we need somebody to come in here and steer us the right direction, or we need to get on a, you know, local area group to help us in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Dr. Sullivan, next question for you, two minutes. Given the importance of parks and recreation to residents of all ages and knowing there is a need for a park in the northern part of town, what would be your proposal for curational park in that area?
We have quite a bit of property in the northern end of town that could be developed into a park. There's been discussion on this for quite a few years now. I know that Ron Murphy has looked at some of the properties and made some recommendations. There's, for example, over in the Riverbend Meadows, there's a lot that the town owns at the end of Adalia, I think it is. It would be the perfect place for a small park that can eat what you put in. It's already a lot, and it's already got the, the understory is cut down, it's mowed, so it would be perfect to do a quick, immediate small park there. There's also opportunities to do that in the area of the right-of-way where the golf cart is, and there are grants available from the highway department, who manages that right-of-way, where we could actually do some work on the park there too.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Mr. David, one minute.
I agree there should be development of parks in the northern side of town. And like Dr. Sullivan, I've spoken with the town manager and the folks in town to look at areas that would be supportive of that. And I think the important aspect is tying in the stormwater management plan with the development of any kind of park. We know how expensive it was for Victoria Smith Park, but there are areas that are probably conducive, more conducive to stormwater management than creating a pond or a lake, small lake, in conjunction with a park. It would be, you know, value-added.
Thank you, Mr. David. Mr. Donaldson, one minute.
Yes, I would be supportive of this department and all that. I do see that we need to find revenue and certainly a location for a park. It is certainly is needed, and I'm in support of that.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. DeRosa, one minute.
You also have property up in the numbered streets and alluded to what Mr. Sullivan said. You also have the ban program and whatnot by the right-of-way and whatnot. But there's areas that could be a park up there. I think we have enough parks down in the southern end of our town, especially at Castlewood Park area.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. One minute.
Yes, I'm in support of a park in the northern part of town. I live in the northern part of town and quite often have my nine and ten-year-old niece and nephew come to visit. So I would much rather take them to a park located in my vicinity versus to Castlewood or to Washington Street. Currently, we have batted around as a council in improving the, or starting to put the infrastructure into the numbered streets, what it would cost, looking at engineering and such. I do think versus just throwing up a park somewhere, we need to look at our infrastructure and our stormwater management to include that in a park area versus just throwing up a park and then having to move it or what have you. But yes, I'm very much in support of a park being in the north end of town.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. One minute.
One of the major issues that will be before council in the new year is the revised comprehensive plan. And frankly, I'd like to see that plan and how that plan addresses the issue of parks and recreation on a holistic basis before we get, without getting into specifics until we have the entire beautiful area.
Thank you, Mr. Montier. Mr. David, next question will be for you, two minutes. Would you support the concept of a one-way around-the-point? Irving Avenue becoming one-way north and south, and the rural avenue one-way south-north with a bike pedestrian area?
Okay, I'm going to ask that question first, but I'm not sure what problem we're solving with that. Making it a one-way, I live on Irving Avenue, and I see some of the benefits of potentially having a one-way movement around the point. But I also think we need to look more deeply at the problem, is are we going to exacerbate issues on Lawson, Bancroft, and Marshall by doing that? If it's the speed of traffic, there are other ways to facilitate that. But until there was a real study done on what the real issue is and what the potential solutions are, I wouldn't jump to one solution of it's one-way traffic around the point.
Thank you, Mr. David. Mr. Donaldson, same question, one minute.
Well, at this time, from what I experienced, what I see of seeing traveling through the area, I'm not, at this time, for one-way traffic. I see, until we can show significant reason why we would need to have one-way traffic in those areas, for right now, no.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. DeRosa, one minute.
I would concur with Mr. Kirby on his, I'd have to see a study. I haven't seen many information why we would need to have Irving Avenue one-way, unless I have additional information to convince me otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. One minute.
Currently, as it stands, I would not support making Irving Avenue one-way. Back some time ago, I've been with Arlington for four years, but prior to that, I was with the Columbia Beach Police Department for almost four years. And that, the point is one of my problem spots for people in speaking. I work with other members of council, and we recently purchased a couple of light R machines for our police to use to try and combat some of the speeding on the point, and I'm referring to the inter-rates. Although Irving is not much better, if you walk out there, as I was today, I had somebody pass me at probably thirty-five miles an hour and didn't even give me space in the pavement, I had to jump off the street. So at this time, no, I wouldn't support it. We would definitely have to do our homework before I would ever entertain that thought.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Mr. Montier.
Immediate reaction is to trade one set of inconveniences for another. So we probably want a formular study. Let me just guess in short, we probably need to go to a four-way stop near the section of Washington and North Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Montier. Dr. Sullivan, one minute.
So the reason that that's been considered, and it's been called down the river and up the bay, probably a lot of other names too, is because of the danger that bikers, walkers have. They're at risk, especially during the summer months. And by doing one-way, have. They're at risk, especially during the summer months. And by doing one way, we would have a wider street that would allow the cars going in one direction and then bike lanes and walking lanes. And that's the reason it's been considered. In concept, I'd like the idea. I've seen it work in other beach towns. But in reality, we have, we would be, we would be pushing traffic onto all the cross streets and onto Lawson and Bancroft and Marshall. So it would need to have, it would need to be a major plan in order to make that happen. But the concept of it, unless we can find a way to widen River Bay Avenue and widen Irving Avenue, this, the risk to bikers and walkers is going to remain.
Thank you, Dr. Self-Sullivan. Next question will be for you, Mr. Donaldson, and then just two minutes. Do you believe that it will be necessary to raise the tax base to provide for the infrastructure repairs and improvements that are necessary?
Well, from what I'm, what I'm thinking, what I'm feeling is, it's probably something that, that needs to be strongly looked, looked at. And even though we have some incentive tax on our citizens here, and Lord knows, I, I certainly don't want myself to be, or anyone else to be paying more taxes, but for community dysfunction and everything we need to have, we certainly need to look at how to generate more money. If it's called for increasing tax of some sort, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. DeRisario, one minute.
Well, we have one point eight million dollars in surplus now in water sewer infrastructure, and we can certainly get other grants. It's something that's been kicked down the road over the years, many years. It's going to be an ongoing problem for many more years. And then you got the DOTSA group that I would hope in the negotiations with the town can help out with the downtown area. So I'm going to take a wait and see approach from the developers to see what they're willing to kick in to help us out. And for the short, medium and long term haul with the infrastructure with the town and then see where we're at as whether or not we need to increase water sewer and infrastructure in the town. It's an ongoing problem, no question about it. It's going to continue to be that because we've got fifty percent miles of road or pipes that need to be repaired. And somewhere down the line, we're going to need revenues. We can, of course, the technology has increased, stuff saves money, but whether there's more grants out there, and that was something that I asked before four years ago, get grantmaster to essentially get full time grants. We'll see where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. DeRisario. One minute.
I certainly wouldn't endorse an additional tax increase. Unfortunately, I've sat on the council and had to vote for one. I don't like paying higher taxes any, any more than anyone else does. But if we have a fail in our water and sewer infrastructure, the money's going to have to come from somewhere. I agree with Mr. DeRisario. We do need to, to put ourselves out there and market ourselves to attempt to find monies that are available from the state and federal government to assist with this. But again, if, if, you know, I'm not going to say that I will vote to increase taxes if we have a, a major failure in infrastructure because people that live in this town have to have water and sewer and the money has to come from somewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Mr. Montier, one minute.
Water and sewer should enjoy our highest legislature's priority. I consider county taxes to be, well, absent last resort, and would suggest that as we are envisioning proceeds from the sale of property, which hopefully will occur, that those funds should be specifically dedicated to upgrading waters.
Thank you, Mr. Montier. Dr. Self-Sullivan, one minute.
Could you repeat the question? I thought you said tax base. I hear people talking about taxes.
Do you believe it will be necessary to raise tax base to provide for the infrastructure repairs and improvements that are necessary?
So we definitely need to increase our tax base. And one good step towards that is to have somebody doing the economic development that we need to be doing, to bring more businesses, to attract more families, to building in some of the underdeveloped property in the numbered streets. As for current repairs and improvements with the water and sewer, since we changed our water and sewer rate, raise, that was, that was actually mandated because the water and sewer is supposed to be paid for by the fees. We shouldn't have to go to the tax, the property taxes in order to take care of that. So depending on what these new costs come in, then our water and sewer taxes would probably go up because we have to cover our maintenance and fees. But I understand that we have a surplus now and that we have reserves in the budget to help us get through that.
Thank you, Dr. Self-Sullivan. Mr. Caverly, one minute. Same question.
Sorry, Dr. Self-Sullivan, I'm just saying, there's two issues here. You're talking about raising the tax base. It can also be accomplished with broadening the tax base. And that's by bringing in economic development, bringing in new residents, bringing in developers that help and support this. But we can broaden the tax base and thereby not incur the taxes directly on the people that are paying the taxes right now. For our infrastructure, we need to do what we can, but I do believe that broadening is a way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Caverly. Next question for you, Mr. DeRisario. You'll have two minutes. Do you support the effort to consolidate Colonial Beach Public Services with Westmoreland County?
Are you talking west, public services? Are you talking fire and rescue or everything?
Question says, do you support the effort to consolidate Colonial Beach Public Services with Westmoreland County?
That's a broad question. If you're talking about fire and rescue, I would be lucky to be professionals of the rescue squad and fire department to make that determination when that time comes. I'm law enforcement like Dallas. I'm not in that profession to make that determination. We have pride in our fire department rescue squads. If they're talking about public services, that may be a possibility because sometimes they're ready to doing what they do, but sometimes they have to contract things out. It would be something we'd have to study and look into the future or cost savings or that.
Thank you, Mr. DeRisario. Mr. Lemon, one minute.
I'm going to have to echo what Mr. DeRisario said. Public service is a, is a broad scope. The county is required to provide us with certain public services, AKA courts, social services, and that kind of thing. We pay for that when we pay our county taxes. I'm not for merging our police department with the Westmoreland County Sheriff's Office. The people in this town pay taxes and they expect when they call 911 that a police officer comes to their door. And I'm very good friends with the sheriff. I'm very good friends with his command staff. I don't think that as large a county as Westmoreland is, that they can provide us that service that we need. And not to mention, we have a whole lot of law enforcement calls here, especially during our busy season, during our tourist season, and I believe that will overload the, the Westmoreland County Sheriff's Office. As far as the fire and rescue department.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Mr. Montier, one minute.
If consolidation could be done at that take to Colonial Beach for what should be answered, yes. But it will come as no surprise. I think anybody that has run relationships with the county and the town have not always been as amicable and above board as they should be, as they're chartered to characterize. So I would be wary of any, any agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Montier. Dr. Self-Sullivan, same question, one minute.
I, I would not be in support of consolidating our public services with the county. We've already seen how the county has tried to withhold money that we are defrauded from the grants that came in from the state. We have the density of our homes, the density of our businesses mandates that we have people that are in close proximity, that we need to make the decisions on our public services within this dense environment that's in the best interest of the town.
Thank you, Dr. Self-Sullivan. Mr. Caverly, one minute.
I agree with every candidate up here. Right now, I don't see a reason why we consolidate unless it's advantageous to the town to do so. I know there are current services provided by Westmoreland County that we pay for, social services, the court system, those kind of things. Anything else in addition to that, until I see why we need to do it, I wouldn't support it.
Thank you, Mr. Caverly. Mr. Donaldson, one minute.
Well, at this time, I'm not in favor of consolidation with, with the county. But I would go further to say that perhaps we need to, perhaps we need to do some kind of study or get some kind of study to see what, what benefit Colonial Beach can derive from some kind of consolidation with the county. But on the outset, no, I'm not particularly in favor of it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. Lemon, the next question for you. Be two minutes. Do you believe that capital budget items should follow the outline stated by, of the comprehensive plan and recommendations by the planning commission?
Absolutely. That's what the comp plan is there for. That's what it's worked on. You know, and it's, it's a binding document to a certain extent to, to lead the council in a positive, in a positive direction. You know, that comes from the planning commission. Again, I said earlier when I got the planning commission question that these folks volunteer a lot of time, volunteer to go through a lot of training, to do a lot of work for us so that we as a council don't have to do that. Again, I agree with my other candidates up here in saying that, that our council has the ultimate say, you know, and, but, you know, we, we do need to respect the planning commission and the comprehensive plan and, and try and use that as a guide to take us into the future when we're deciding on capital improvements and such.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Mr. Montier, same question, one minute.
The answer is yes, if the council approves the comprehensive plan, that's the plan. Council's approval.
Okay, Mr. Montier, thank you. Dr. Self-Sullivan, same question, one minute.
Yeah, the, the CIP and the comp plan really drive the direction of the town. And yes, the town council does look at that and approve that. But once it's been approved and it's in place, that should drive our agenda and our decision, this council. The only exception is emergencies. There are going to be emergencies when we need to do some sort of a capital improvement, whether it's due to the stormwater runoff or hurricane. There are exceptions to that, but they should be exceptions and not the rule.
Thank you, Dr. Self-Sullivan. Mr. Caverly, one minute. Same question.
Again, as a member of the planning commission, I'm hoping that the comprehensive plan is the guidance comes with this. However, we do know that every year that the planning commission develops a capital improvement plan, working with the town and the, and the resources that are using the town to determine if anything has changed. As the environment changes, we may have to shift priorities on things. So yes, the comprehensive plan is there for the touchstone, but the capital improvement plan is something that is updated on a continuous basis to ensure that we get the support and the facilitating infrastructure that is required for the town running.
Thank you, Mr. Caverly. Mr. Donaldson, one minute.
Well, at this time, I, I, I'm new to this situation, but from what I understand, I would still be, be in favor of following the comprehensive and the committee, planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Caverly. Mr. DeRisario.
I was at a recent planning commission meeting last month, looked at the comprehensive plan that they were working on. I support Mr. Lemon and Mr. Caverly. There are exceptions to the rule with that. It's a working plan for the council and the capital improvement, except for emergencies and whatnot. But yes, don't go along with the people that you're pointing with the thankless hours that they've put into it. Why have the commission such your point?
Thank you, Mr. DeRisario. Mr. Montier, next question will be for you. You have two minutes. Would you promote the idea of an all professional fire and rescue service with a central facility for both?
Immediate reaction is no. We seem to be adequately served at this point by our volunteer services. Volunteer services are particularly valuable. Obviously, you've got people that are very dedicated to what they do. It is a great benefit, obviously, for the town to have these volunteer services. It's appropriate for the council to support them to some extent, but no, at this point, absolutely compelling reasons otherwise. I think we need to maintain our volunteer services.
Thank you, Mr. Montier. Dr. Self-Sullivan, same question, one minute.
Yeah, I haven't seen an all professional fire and rescue system except in the larger cities. I mean, all the counties in this area, Spotsylvania, Stafford, Caroline, King George, Westmoreland, we all rely on our volunteers. They do a good job. And yes, there are some paid staff that are in those departments. As far as the central facility, that's been talked about quite a bit. And I, I think that with, with the development, particularly with the DOTSA group, if there's an opportunity to maybe get some blockers from some of the development that's going in town that could build us a, a facility that could be accommodated by both, still leaving them the autonomy that they need to make decisions as volunteer departments. But a, a facility that for one would get the rescue squad up out of the swamp where it floods every time that the creek fills up.
Thank you, Dr. Self-Sullivan. Mr. Caverly, same question, one minute.
Along the same line, right now, I don't see need to have a professional force in place and addressing the question of the consolidation of them. I mean, I see what the town budget is right now for both those entities. Unless I saw a reason why it is detrimental to the town either one way or the other, keep them separate or consolidate, I wouldn't make a decision on that.
Thank you, Mr. Caverly. Mr. Donaldson, one minute.
Well, no, I don't see a need for all, no, all professional service. I would say that the volunteer services. I think it's, I think it's working well for us at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. DeRisario, one minute.
Well, I'm a little credentialed on that because I've been a member of local organizations and the fire department, we've seen the truck, crowd, atomic. I would leave that to them. They're very professionals, they're highly trained. And when that time comes, I'd leave them to make that recommendation if I'm willing to counsel them to make that facility. They'll make the decision for us.
Thank you, Mr. DeRisario. Mr. Lemon, one minute.
I would not support it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Next question will be for you, Dr. Self-Sullivan. Two minutes. Off meter parking is a major problem to homeowners in the side streets, especially during the summer months. Do you feel that non-decal cars should be ticketed?
I think that like many of the smaller cities too, with smaller towns, we should have resident only parking in front of the residents, that we need to have the parking available that's reserved for our visitors and our guests. And I know a lot of us have vacation rental cottages and things like that. And then we worry that, okay, so they're not residents, do they have to pay to park in front of the cottage that's already rented? And that can be resolved with a hang tag. So I think that if we could find a way to prevent the off metering parking in front of residences and along those small side streets, that that would be a really good thing to do. How we do it, again, I would say resident only parking and a, a hang tag or your sticker required in order to park on those streets.
Thank you, Dr. Self-Sullivan. Mr. Caverly, same question, one minute.
As a resident of Alexandria for a few years and my kids coming home and visiting college, I had to do the same thing. I had to go get an extra sticker or a hanging tag for them to park their cars before they would get a ticket. I do think that there should be some sort of method of controlling the inability of non-residents here or non-residents. People visiting the beaches, parking in residential areas on the side streets. And I do think a tag system is an easy way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Caverly. Mr. Donaldson, one minute.
I concur with that. I've spent a lot of time in Washington DC and Georgetown and Old Town and trying to find parking. It's, it's quite an issue. And you certainly can't park in front of certain residents' spaces. So we need to come up with some kind of plan, some kind of idea. The ticket, hanging little bag on a car, something like that. We need to have some spaces for businesses to come here to the town to, to visit, to do what they need to do and to go to the beaches and those kinds of things. And we need to have some kind of system for parking for them off parking to, to continue to encourage them to come and not leave and say, hell, I'm not going to Columbia Beach because you, you can't park anywhere other than a meter when all the units are taken up. So we need to come up with some kind of, some kind of plan for off parking spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. DeRisario, one minute.
You know, if an ocean city out parked in a residential area, they give you a ticket that you pay for within twenty-four hours. It was a dollar, it was a ten dollar ticket. We're leaning down here. And I mean, we've had this problem since the sixties, but this year because of pandemic, COVID-19, people parking all over. I mean, we're not seeing people on the beaches back this year like back when I was a kid in the sixties. But yeah, I agree with the other speakers that we need to come up with a plan to help people out so they do come to Colonial Beach and get their some kind of a break, but although not park upon people's residence, because people get not park upon people's residence, because people get already in their places parked with their stuffs.
Thank you, Mr. DeRisario. Mr. Lemon, one minute.
Yes, I am in support of ticketing any vehicle that's parked in a residential area that is, doesn't have a Colonial Beach town sticker. However, I will say parking has been on our radar for the last four years that I've been on the council, and we have also discussed weekend visitors that don't have their cars registered here. We've tried to encourage, to for people to register their cars here. I understand they have two residences and they want to keep it where their primary residence is. We have also talked about with the town, with the current town manager, making a hang tag for people that have rental properties as well as our weekend folks, so that they are not ticketed, but they are recognized as a homeowner here or a property owner here and can park for a minimal fee for that tag for a year or, you know, for the parking season or what have you.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Mr. Montier?
That may well be the best plan for getting people to make sure they have town stickers in their cars. I am hopeful that parking in particular is going to be one of the issues addressed in the revised comprehensive plan. Certainly, anybody who has dealt with Colonial Beach on weekends recognizes what a substantial problem we have and we need to deal with.
Thank you, Mr. Montier. Mr. Caber, you've got two minutes, next question. Speeding along Irving Avenue and Monroe Bay avenues is dangerous. What do you feel could help alleviate the problem?
Again, as a resident on Irving, I'm quite certain that I've seen cars speeding down the road. But again, there are multiple solutions to this problem, whether it be speed bumps near first stop signs, but it has to be looked at holistically so that we're not just transferring the problem to loss and bankrupt and marshal. So this is more than just slowing cars down on Irving, and this could apply to anywhere in Colonial Beach. There are streets that we have that run all the way, Euclid runs all the way up, and I've been on Euclid and a golf cart has been passed by. There are, this has to be holistically looked at, and it maybe can be done by separate areas, but it definitely needs to be looked at deeper than just, hey, we got to fix it on Irving. That's a bigger problem.
Thank you, Mr. Caber. Mr. Darlington, one minute.
Oh, my goodness, not just on Irving, I've seen cars beating the white Meyer, the long stretch, and I've seen cars just flying through there, and what can we do about it? That's a good question. I don't quite have an answer at this time for that, but it certainly needs to be given some attention and try to come up with some kind of, some kind of returns to solidify the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Darlington. Mr. DeRisario?
I don't know, I've lost five cats this summer because they speed on Monroe Bay Avenue and Marshall. We've got racetrack Colonial Beach and all the side streets, and I don't know what the actual solution to the problem is because the police cannot be everywhere at one time. It has to be studied and come up with a solution to it because people are not as respectful as they were at one time. So I don't know what the solution to this problem is, but we're going to have to address.
Thank you, Mr. DeRisario. Mr. Lemon, one minute.
As I've said several times, I worked for the police department here for almost four years, and it's always the complaint, especially on the point. I have friends who live on Myers, and I agree with you, Mr. Darlington, it's like a racetrack because it's straight and it's wide open. The problem is that our infrastructure and our streets almost prohibit police from running radar. That's the reason that the current town council had a discussion and approved to pay for two LiDAR machines for the police to use to attempt to enforce speeding. I also agree with Mr. DeRisario, that's not a decision that us as a council member should make. We probably need somebody to come in here and do a traffic study. I'm for speed bumps, you know, but where do we put them? And I'm not that traffic professional, so that's what we need to do. We need to have somebody come in here and tell us what could help us out. I'm hearing Irving Avenue, I'm hearing the inner streets on the point, I'm hearing Myers Avenue. We've obviously got a problem everywhere. I live on Riverside, in Riverside Meadows or Wakefield Street, and people drive by my house at 40 miles an hour, you know, and I got people parking on the street, so it's a wonder there hasn't been somebody hit and killed on my street. So it's definitely a problem, and I think, hopefully, whoever's on this next council will look at doing a traffic study and see how we curb some of this behavior and people being not so nice.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Mr. Montier?
We're talking about specific issues, but we need to look at this in its entirety. Obviously, the configuration of Colonial Beach's roads presents some unusual problems, and it's going to require a comprehensive approach on how we do the traffic. So a, some plan would be well worth while.
Thank you, Mr. Montier. Dr. Self-Sullivan, one minute.
I'm a big believer in prevention and deterrent, and I don't see, and maybe I'm wrong, but I don't see any problems. Let's put some speed bumps in some of the major places and see how it works. I think that's something that could be done reasonably. You could have test locations, Jackson is also another spot, and even Beach Avenue. And the problem with Beach Avenue is they go flying around the corner from 12th to Beach, and very often there's a car stopped there to look at the river. And I'm surprised there haven't been more accidents in front of my house because of that.
Thank you, Dr. Self-Sullivan. Next question will be for you, Mr. Darlington, it's two minutes. What is your position on making the entire Monroe Bay a no-wake zone for both?
I would have to pass on it, I couldn't, I'm not, I couldn't give you a response there. I'm not up on that right now.
Thank you, Mr. Darlington. Mr. DeRisario, one minute.
You have to get the Ring Resources Commission, and you have to write every resident of West Mullen County side of the county and the town that's adjacent to Monroe Bay, have a public hearing, go before the West Mullen County Board, Town Council, get their input, and then make a decision. It's immaterial whether I, as a councilman, am in favor of it or not. That's the procedure. We did that once before, several years ago when I was on the board, and then the county and the town have to vote on it, yet they can come to a consensus.
Thank you, Mr. DeRisario. Mr. Lemon?
Well, the current council took this up, as everybody knows, and my decision hasn't changed. I agree with the, with the no-wake zone, just because of the safety aspect. I've been here for about seven years. I believe there's been two deaths in Monroe Bay in my time of living here, and so my position hasn't changed. You know, obviously, we had some contention with the county residents, we had some contention with the board of supervisors, and also it went as high as people going to the Department of Game and Fisheries because they were friends with the governor, and the Department of Game and Fisheries said they would not support our no-wake zone. So it's very unfortunate, but I know every member of council that did support it, and when we, when we did go to put those rules out there, it was for safety concern. And again, I cite that there's been two people killed in that, in that current societal tier. So yes, my position has not changed.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Mr. Montier, one minute.
Unless there is a particular problem to be addressed, and I'm not aware of one, I'd leave it as null.
Thank you, so, Dr. Self-Sullivan?
Oh, there's absolutely a particular problem that needs to be addressed, not only for the safety and the people that have died out there and the voters that are trying to give in and out of Monroe Bay, but the marinas. The marinas have a huge positive economic impact on our community, and they're very rarely recognized for that. And the waves are doing damage to the marinas. So it's not just a voter safety program, it's an infrastructure program for our, for some of our major businesses in town. I am absolutely in favor of a no-wake zone. I know that the council has tried to get that. I know that they've butted heads with West Mullen County and the governor and everywhere else, but that doesn't mean you shouldn't stop trying if it needs to happen.
Thank you, Dr. Self-Sullivan. Mr. Caber?
Hi, as has been stated, I realize that any decision on that is a pretty lengthy process. If somebody paddleboarded out on Monroe Bay and then knocked off my board by jet skis on by or the boats, I'm definitely in favor of a no-wake for that particular reason. But as Dr. Sullivan went into as well, I think we can start to enlist the support of agencies to look at the erosion of our shoreline that can be caused by those waves, and bring them in, can bring them in there, any kind of discussions we have.
Thank you, Mr. Caber. Next question will be for you, Mr. Derek DeRisario, you'll have two minutes. What do you feel is the best use of Eleanor and Robin Grove parks?
What majority of the citizens have fun in each park for it. Each citizen has fun in each home's property. Years ago, when I was on council in 2015, 16, I tried to get that with the Virginia Outdoor Foundation, was voted off our $1 million for town to re-joan the property. I think that fell through the wayside. I know Mayor Blunt and I had discussions with that on the sale. More likely the property should be sold and put houses, well, and get tax revenue out of that. That would be my position. I'd like to get this to use as a playground on Castlewood Park, should we use Castlewood Park and build that park up and save conflict.
Thank you, Mr. DeRisario. One minute.
Well, my position hasn't changed in the last four years, and that is that I think Eleanor Park needs to remain a green space. However, I do not want to continue to see that park so stagnant with nothing going on with it. That was one of the reasons we and the three other council persons started earlier this year, to put the new playground equipment over there and move the Castlewood Park over there, and I still stand behind that. I think adding a park would be, would be, would be great, especially if you were going to take Castlewood Park out. I would also like to see that, that location generate some type of revenue, and maybe doing a wedding venue, maybe a gazebo. We've had Friends of Eleanor Park, we've had Colonial Beach Green Space make many, many recommendations to us, and unfortunately, when the last real estate deal fell through, it was, it was a majority of council who said that when we, when we realized that that didn't go through, is that all of us, to include people that were, were for the sale of it, to include Mayor Eddie Blunt, we wanted to see something done with it, and we still sit here, I think, two years later, and we're still bickering over this park. You know, there's newcomers that come to town who don't do their homework, and, you know, sell, sell, sell. I'm really worried about when we sell all of our property, what's that going to do for our bond rating when we have to go out and get a, get a loan to fix another piece of failing infrastructure?
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Mr. Montier, same question, one minute.
It is surrounded on three sides by residential property, and it seems like the best use of that property would be in the core of the surrounding properties as residential property.
Thank you, Mr. Montier. Dr. Self-Sullivan?
This is my question, and I have two minutes prepared. There's been a lot of turnover on town council and planning commission since the recommendation was first made in 2013 to maintain that property as recreational, open, park-type property. Since then, the planning commission has reaffirmed that. They voted on it three times, and they just as their last meeting reaffirmed that's what the property should be used to. I would never say never, but I have worked on all of the proposals to give a conservation easement on the property. I know that there's money out there for that, and not only that, my vision for Eleanor Park is to develop it as part of our stormwater management plan. This would include rain gardens, storm event events, interpretive signs, natural history, how the park is part of our stormwater management plan. It could include interpretive signs for history, fishing practice, oyster history. It would include improvements that enable our residents to enjoy the space for meditation, reading, yoga, croquet, bocce ball, and other low-impact sports. We could put in a couple of large pavilions or some clusters of small pavilions, gazebo that could be used as a wedding or other income-producing venue.
Thank you, Dr. Self-Sullivan. Mr. Caber, same question, one minute.
Okay, first, I believe that we should have parks in Colonial Beach among the panel that, specifically with Eleanor Park, I think there does have to be enhancements made, and I'll say enhancements, it could be something in the shape of what Dr. Sullivan stated, but I think ultimately what we need to look at is what provides the most for it for the community as a whole, and that's what has to be looked at when we make an ultimate decision on that. There's a lot of studies still need to be done on what is best for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Caber.
Can I say one more thing?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Darlington, one minute, same question.
Well, I hear a lot of things to the community on both sides of what should be done at Eleanor Park, and my position right now, just, just, it's, it's still not fully formulated. I think we need to, to have to look at, and we've been discussed by the planning commission and other people, to develop that park for revenue. But my candidate next to me is saying, Mr. Caber, is that we do need to have the green spaces, so it's, it's been an issue for a long while, so I, I, I'm still talking around what I think is going to be best for the, for the town. We need to get money, we need to generate money, and we need to have parks. So I'm, I'm open to, to hear more things about which way we should go. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not totally set in.
Thank you, Mr. Darlington. Mr. DeRisario, you've already spoken. Now, this will be for you, Mr. Lemon, you have two minutes. What kind of businesses would you like to see come to Colonial Beach?
That's Luke.
Mr. Lemon, two minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you last? Okay, sorry, must've got off filter. It's a good thing you're keeping track of it. I'd like to see some additional restaurants come to town. I think that's, that's always good for tourism. I'm kind of excited about the program that Dotson would put out there at us, which will incorporate some new homes as well as some restaurants, as well as commercial, commercial spaces, which is very exciting. Would also like to see, I don't know, I'd like to see, again, you know, I enjoy the restaurants we have here in town, would like to see some more fast food options. Would love to have a Walmart here so I don't have to go all the way to King George, but that's never going to happen because we don't have the demand, so, you know, I think we're good with marinas. I don't think we've got space for any more marinas. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but, you know, I think anything that bring, bring tourism into town is definitely a plus because that's one of our, that's one of our big moneymakers is, is bringing, bringing folks to our town as well as the rest of the northern net.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Mr. Montier, same question, one minute.
Basically, I'd like to see any lawful business in town, but we've seen our beaches this year extremely crowded on most weekends, and it would be exceedingly beneficial to the town if we had businesses in particular that could be used by these beaches. We provide a nice beach, I'd like to say, I'd like for them to have plenty of opportunities to spend money in restaurants, shops, and other retail businesses all the way up to the beach.
Thank you, Mr. Montier. Dr. Self-Sullivan, same question, one minute.
Thank you. This still comes back to an economic development program. I would like to see businesses come to town that would provide jobs. I would like to see businesses come to town that would provide, preferably, some tech jobs, a way to keep some of our young people here making enough money so that they don't have to go to Northern Virginia or Fredericksburg to work. Businesses that would imply providing employment, and that's why we need a consultant to determine what can we offer businesses to come here, what can we do to attract businesses. That's why we need an economic development program or committee or partnering with another regional economic development program that will help us decide what we need, how, how we can support those businesses, both in the workforce and in the infrastructure, and then we can go in and attract those businesses by offering them incentives.
Thank you, Dr. Self-Sullivan. Mr. Caber, one minute.
All right, I agree we need businesses that would attract tourists to come here and actually spend their money here as opposed to just their time here in a lot of cases. There are a lot of ideas I've heard people talking about in terms of the number of vendors you have out on the work block, creating consolidated one single kitchen space, almost like a food court that you see in the malls, where it shares kitchen space but individual serving opportunities. I do think there needs to be something in addition to just the business, and that's the training and skillset opportunities for our citizens here, whether the young students graduating from high school or young residents at tech school of some type that may be partnering with Rattan County College, developing the skills and waters and whether it be young, young students graduating from high school or young, young residents, uh, at tech school of some type that may be partnering with Rappahannock Community College, um, developing the skills of waters, masons, uh, carpenters, welders, machinists, any of those industries that support the marina, that support the development of the pregnancy. Uh, I do think that we need to provide more training here, post life for that, and that will afford us the opportunities as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fabry. Mr. Darlington, one minute.
Well, for the years that I've been living in Colonial Beach, I've seen a number of businesses start up and go down. We as, as townspeople, we do frequent, uh, many of our businesses in town. Uh, apparently that's not enough to keep a lot, some of the business up and running. I feel what we need is to find a way to generate more people to come, be attracted to come to Colonial Beach, uh, to spend money in the stores we have here, uh, and to, to, to try to encourage other business to see that traffic and open businesses here. Um, I don't, I don't feel, I don't think that just the townspeople, uh, supporting these out local stores is, is enough. We need to attract influx of people to town and what, what do we need to do to do that, to attract, to come to Colonial Beach? So that we can, uh, encourage business to operate here.
Thank you, Mr. Darlington. Uh, Mr. DiRisario, same question in one minute.
Yes, we have downtown market, uh, development that we have, uh, economic development director. We also have the University Mary Washington and, uh, Rappahannock Community Council starting small, small business office to help locations like us who, uh, did businesses. And we also have ransom to bring people. I also look at what I asked back in nineteen ninety-eighty-six and seventy-six. Bringing light industry brings in people, have jobs for youth and whatnot. There's a number of ways that we can innovate and bring people into Colonial Beach like we did for West Voluntary with carry-on trailers and whatnot. We have to be innovative to bring people in, to take the tax base off the residents and the hungry ones and whatnot. Maybe can be, we just have to be creative.
Thank you, Mr. DiRisario. Uh, Mr. Blunt here, uh, next question for you, two minutes. Would you support policies to secure affordable in-town housing for seniors, essential workers, and moderate income households?
The, the answer is a qualified yes, it, it, it's really a question of what policy you're talking about. Counsel, I think, could be very, very involved in zoning and planning matters to encourage, um, builders to build affordable houses. Uh, there is a movement now in a lot of areas, as we've hit here, uh, for small houses for, for less expensive properties. And to the extent that we can adjust standards in zoning to accommodate that sort of housing, I think we address the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Blunt here. Uh, Dr. Sullivan, one minute, same question.
Absolutely. There are, there are apartments available where we could do more affordable housing for our seniors, for our young people, for our workforce. Um, if you look at some of the other counties, you'll see areas where there are cluster homes, apartments, townhouses. And when you develop that way, you have a lot more land to use for green space around these, this more convinced housing. And that gives you a better opportunity to deal with the stormwater management.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Uh, Mr. Fabry, same, same question in one minute.
Uh, yes, I support policy and I believe that our policy in place dictates, uh, certain percentages of housing that's being built. And as Dr. Sullivan said, we look at, uh, opportunities for the higher density housing to reduce the cost of, um, the housing we, uh, we normally, you know, incur around here for single-family dwellings. Uh, those high density dwellings would be the opportunity to maximize that.
Thank you, Mr. Fabry. Mr. Darlington, one minute.
Yes, I concur with that. We certainly need to have, uh, more affordable housing for, um, people, uh, to live in the town. Yes, I support that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Darlington. Mr. DiRisario, one minute.
The average is thirty-five, six thousand four, uh, revenues for affordable housing. I concur with Mr. Blunt here and Mr. Camby in their statements in response to that.
Thank you, Mr. DiRisario. Mr. Lind, one minute.
I don't believe I could say anything that hadn't been said, that I would concur and, and support, uh, policies to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Lind. All right, this is going to be the last question and we'll start, uh, with, uh, Dr. Sullivan, two minutes. What do you see as the single highest priority for the next council?
I like to look at the big picture and I don't think I can pick out one single high priority item that the council needs to address. When we think about the big picture, we want to think about supporting the plan, the comprehensive plan that's in place. We want to think about being open and transparent and having opportunities for our citizens to talk with us, to know what's coming to council before it comes so that they don't, we don't get the reactions that we're getting. I think that we need to work together as a council. And I know there are limitations. I've already started taking some of the online classes for the way you can, um, work together as a council. But if we had to have more public meetings so that we could actually hash out some of these issues, such as recount halls, I think that would be very helpful to.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Uh, Mr. Fabry, one minute.
All right, as I think, Miss Jeff mentioned last night, I think the single highest priority for the next council and probably the council after that would be the stormwater management. It impacts our infrastructure. It will impact the future development that occurs here, whether or not people want to choose to develop here. Until we can get the stormwater management system, uh, taking care of, uh, a lot of things, it's just that it's fair, it's, it's on the surface. We need to truly attack that issue of stormwater management in Colonial Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Fabry. Mr. Darlington, one minute.
Yes, I concur with that. We certainly don't want to, uh, see sewage coming up to the street. Uh, we need to do something about, uh, managing that storm system.
Thank you, Mr. Darlington. Mr. DiRisario, one minute.
Monstee Park. Infrastructure and transparency, that's what I've heard all throughout this campaign to protect our heritage.
Thank you, Mr. DiRisario. Mr. Lind, one minute.
Uh, I believe it's pretty evident after the recent storm that we had where we got five inches of water, um, in an hour, I believe it was. Wasn't here, but I came back to a lake in, in, um, in my front yard. Um, so obviously we've, we've got to do something with our stormwater management. Uh, and we've talked about infrastructure and I've, and I've mentioned infrastructure several, several times tonight. Uh, we've got to get on top of that. Uh, we've, we've got old, old infrastructure that is constantly failing. Uh, that's one of the gripes that I've heard for the last four years. Um, I, you know, you see it on social media all the time. I, people run into me in, in the, um, you know, in town and, and that's the gripe. So, um, I think, and again, I, I don't think, uh, me or anybody that's elected, uh, this coming term can, can solve it in four years. So, Mr. Camby's right, it's probably going to be this next council and the council after that and probably the council after that. Uh, but those are definitely priorities that we need to, uh, we need to look at. Uh, I also agree with Mr. DiRisario. Um, you know, I've, I've always wanted to be transparent. Um, I've, I've worked with two councils now and I think we've strived to be as transparent as we could within our bounds. Um, and, and, you know, being legally binding and, um, but I still strive for that every day because we work for you. You are the citizens that elect us.
Thank you, Mr. Blunt. Uh, Mr. Blunt here, one minute.
Clearly the priority needs to be on stormwater management and infrastructure. I don't think there's a question about that. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Blunt here. Uh, Mr. Fabry, three minutes closing remarks.
First, uh, I do want to thank everybody again for hosting this event. I think it's important that all of you, because maybe the candidates, I got to meet the candidates in this forum as well. Um, I know Mitch was back there last night, he began saying, hey, let's take a minute to think about, uh, the folks in the Gulf Coast through the weather and the storm right now. Uh, I'm going to ask you for a different favor and that's to think about our service members that are deployed right now. I've got a sign on my rack, so special thoughts to you, please. Um, I'm asking for your vote over seeing the town council. And I hope tonight's given you the opportunity to get to know me a little bit, get to know about what I think about so many issues as a candidate. And I look forward to the further engagement with you all, uh, as much as COVID can allow us to, uh, until the election date. And I do hope that you all exercise your right to vote on the third of November or early, if you have the opportunity to. Uh, you will get the council to vote for it and I hope that's how it turns out. And I'm excited about the future of Colonial Beach and I'm ready to roll my sleeves and, uh, become more and more familiar with the issues that face this town, develop the various solutions and, uh, work on fair interpretations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fabry. Mr. Darlington, three minutes.
As I mentioned in my opening remarks, I think I have the knowledge, the experience to work as a team member to get, to get things done. As a council member, I know the importance of listening to others, to others' perspective to open, to be open to work with the mayor, the town manager, and the planning commission, planning committee. I thank you for your time and I do ask for your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darlington. Mr. DiRisario, three minutes.
Thank you. There is no substitute for experience and knowledge and information being there by. All from my own leading the town forward with respect to our needs and our unique heritage. We all have our ideas and plans on how to bring our town to the next decade and beyond. If elected, I will do my very best to represent the taxpayers, voters of Colonial Beach with honor and respect. We all want Colonial Beach to be a town where we all are proud of our flavor, character, and beauty. Where our children can be proud and receive a good education, have good jobs, readily work in a safe environment, have healthcare, police, fire, and rescue protection, and other vital services. We as a community must all work together to achieve our goals. I will use all of my abilities, skills, and experience in my thirty years plus of public service for the benefit of our town if elected. I ask you for your vote and support this November third and continue to be a crowd of our playground of the Potomac. However, I cannot do this task alone. I ask for your help. First, election day is November third. I ask for your vote. Second, I need you to come through with my open door policy to continue to let me know issues that are important to you. Together, we can preserve what is good about the town of Colonial Beach in the way and light as we know and love. Be safe. God bless you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. DiRisario. Mr. Lind, three minutes.
Well, I did prepare a two-minute speech because that's what the email said, but I unfortunately left it on my desk at home because I worked till five and I had to shower to get here, so I don't have, uh, closing statements. Um, I do want to say that I'm the only candidate here that, that is running for reelection. Uh, I've worked hard with the mayor and, and two town councils to, uh, to support and, and do the best we could for the town of Colonial Beach. I mentioned in my opening remarks that we're on the, we're on the cusp of something that's going to, going to really, really, um, come to fruition and I hope it's going to be positive, uh, for the town of Colonial Beach. Um, I, I do want to, to reiterate that, that I feel that it's, it's any member of council, and as well as the mayor, that we, we make sure that we, we move, uh, through this process, uh, as, not as quickly as we can, but make sure we cover all of our bases and make sure that the town is, uh, protected, uh, throughout this process. Uh, that's one thing that I, that I strive to, uh, to do if we get to that point. Um, I, I can't echo enough, and I think, uh, several of my opponents have said this, uh, get out and vote on November third. Get out and vote. Um, I would respectfully request that you, uh, vote for me to, uh, to continue to be your council member for the next four years. Uh, thank you for coming and I know it's very trying times and, uh, I wish to all of you a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Lind. Mr. Blunt here, three minutes.
We have touched on a number of very complex and ongoing issues to see. It is clear that there are no simple solutions to a lot of the problems that face us. It's going to require substantial influence, substantial study, and a willingness to sit down and knock out the best solutions that we can for the problems that we face. I would suggest to you that, that, that basically three parameters I use in analyzing issues. The first is that it requires the expenditure of funds, hazardous investments. Second, if it involves the use of real estate, is it in accord with the comprehensive plan? And third, if public input is used, has there been adequate notice to the public and an opportunity for them to be heard? Uh, with that, I hope, I, I recognize I don't have all the answers. Um, I'm hitting a lot of doors and getting a lot of suggestions. There have been a lot of suggestions compounded this evening. And I look forward to working with the council as a elected member and hope that I have your support.
Thank you, Mr. Blunt here. Uh, Dr. Sullivan, three minutes.
Thank you. Since moving here full-time eight years ago, I feel like Colonial Beach has been getting better and better. Recent councils have built momentum and we're definitely on the cusp of something extraordinary. Absolutely, repair and improvement to our infrastructure must be a priority. We cannot attract visitors, residents, or businesses as our stormwater, drinking water, and sewer systems are not under working order. Property values will not continue to build up unless we can, can include our roads and sidewalks too. Our public works department and our town manager are already working hard towards long-term solutions. But in the meantime, there are residents who are dealing with immediate stormwater issues. There are places where the sewer system is precarious, to say the least. As a member of town council, I will be available to take your calls and emails, to hear your problem and to do my best to help you find a way to resolve it, whether or not the council can resolve it for you. As a part of that long-term solution, we have to look at our stormwater management from a bird's eye view. With the new GIS and IDAR technology, we can better predict how the water is going to flood. By using existing parks and green spaces, we can improve stormwater mitigation through retention ponds, rain gardens, drainage shrubs that will take up the water and use it while providing a, a wonderful habitat for humans too. The most important strengths that I can bring to council are perspective. I have the ability to look at the world from many different perspectives. I've been a real estate salesman. I've been a conservation biologist. I've been a mother. I've been a, um, a, a property owner and a business owner. My curiosity, I am incredibly curious and I love learning and I'm driven by the opportunity to solve problems. My honesty, as you can tell tonight, I speak the truth as I understand it and I present myself in a genuine way. I, I avoid pretense. I strive to act in a sincere way and I take full responsibility for my feelings and my actions. And hope, I accept the best for our future and I will work to achieve it. I believe that good future is something that we can bring to life. So if you think my background and experience would be advantageous to council, please pass your vote for me. If you don't know yet, get to know me though. Have coffee with me on Monday mornings and Sunday mornings. I'm at Colonial Buzz on Monday and I'm at Julie's on Sunday. Follow me on Facebook and Twitter and my, um, blog page. All of my handles are Karen four, the number four, C D. Come visit. If you don't feel comfortable coming to a coffee, give me a call. Come sit on my porch or have me stop by your house. And as long as we can be outdoors and socially distant, I will take the time to talk to you and do everything I can to help you solve your problem. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Sullivan. Now, if we give a big round of applause for all our candidates.
I guess I would just say thank you all for coming. Thank you for two really, really informative evenings and you have a safe, uh, safe travels back to your home. Thank you.